I'll call to order the eighth meeting at the Marion City Council, meeting in regular session on Monday, March 24, 2014. We'll have the invocation led by Reverend Warren Litchfield, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Moe.
Would you join me in a moment of prayer? Almighty God, we gather this evening now to conduct the business of this city. We offer our prayer for our mayor, for the president, for the members of the city council, and for all an authority granted to them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duties on behalf of all thy people. We commend this city, this county, and this state and this nation to thy merciful care. In being guided by thy divine providence, we will be all secure in thy peace. We especially commend your gracious care in keeping all the men and women of our armed forces at home and abroad, our law enforcement community, and in fine rescue. Defend them day by day with your heavenly grace, strengthen them in their trials and temptations. You encourage to face a peril, reset them, and grant to each a sense of your abiding pretense wherever they may be. Remember those upon a battle of friction; come at those that mourn. Hear our prayer in thy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rowell, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Crary?
Here.
Mr. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Lez?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
President Smalls?
Here.
Mayor Moe.
Agenda item five is approval of the amendments of the seventh meeting on Monday, March 10, 2014. Council, if there are no changes or modifications, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Rowell, please call the roll.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Abstain.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes. We'll also have council approval of the amendments of the closed session for Wednesday, March 5, 2014. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Rowell, please call the roll.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Abstain.
President Smalls?
I agree. Yes. Thank you. Agenda item seven is report of the Marion City Council. We'll start down at the far end, but Councilwoman Crary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the 21st delegation dinner event in Annapolis last Monday night. Came home and I shoveled. And I went to a public hearing on the improvements for Centennial Park, put on by Mr. Lotzky for the citizens of the neighborhood. Came back and I shoveled, and tomorrow I'll shovel. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nicholas.
Nothing to report.
Councilman Ricks?
I want to send out my counsel sympathy to the family of Tommy Bell, longtime resident of the city of Laurel and member of the Knights of Pithias who passed away a week or so ago and had their memorial service just the other day. I'd also like to send out well wishes to the family and to the police department for John Hamilton, who had a serious attack this afternoon or this morning, and hope to him for a speedy recovery.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Councilman Lez?
Thank you, Mr. President. The hearing on Centennial Park was good because we had both an advocate and somebody concerned about noise. And I think Mr. Lotzky and the designers of the park and the skateboard portion satisfied everybody. On March 18, I attended the historic district commission meeting. The owners of the Phelps Mansion up on Montgomery Street, Brooklyn Bridge Road, were in again, and they are continuing to move ahead with the renovation of that historic structure. It's good to see it. On April 10, at 6:00 PM, there will be a public hearing here at City Hall, Laurel City Hall, on the draft of the proposed Patuxent River Policy Plan. This is an update. The document draft and additional information is available at the Patuxent River Commission page at the Maryland Department of Planning website. It's pretty important because last time they went through this, it took over two years to get all seven counties in the city to agree. And we're on a one-year schedule right now, so hopefully this time next year we'll have an approved plan. It builds on state legislation and federal legislation and reporting back through the Patuxent River Commission. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Lez. Couple of things. I, at the invitation of the Maryland Municipal League, had the opportunity to attend PGCMAs orientation for newly elected officials that was held in Green Belt on Thursday. I had the chance to present an open discussion on open meetings. And as you can imagine, everyone in either elected or appointed position had their own views and opinions on exactly what an open meeting is, but as the Maryland Open Meetings Act and manual dictates, there are very set guidelines to follow for open meetings. But it was a very good meeting with a lot of participation. I also had the opportunity to attend the WISE, Winning in Sports and Education mixer that was held as an appreciation for the support that that organization has received from the Laurel community. I don't have an exact date, but I know if you watch your calendars, the community garden is holding its training, I believe it's 24th of April. For those of you who may not be familiar, this will be our second growing season for the community garden. And Dawn Williams, who has been the coordinator for the garden, is holding their first training session for those would-be gardeners. So, the location, I'm looking at Donna. Send a string. Okay. Okay. I'll just simply say the location and exact date will be announced, so we'll make sure that that information gets out to everyone. That's my report. Mayor Moe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. Let me again acknowledge on behalf of the mayor and council, our condolences to Mr. Fleming and the passing of his father, and staying ready to assist Marty. Also, as you heard, Lieutenant John Hamilton with our police department had some issues this morning. They're being taken care of. I talked to John this afternoon. Will be, it seems to be doing well. Chief will keep me posted, and I'll keep you all posted as information comes in on Lieutenant. We wish him a speedy recovery. Did have, as you heard, the skate park did have a public hearing. I want to thank Mr. Lotzky from the Department of Park and Recs and his staff for holding that. We'd like to see more people, but I think those that could be affected in the area were here and stated their concerns or their approvals. I think it was a very positive meeting. If you've gone over to Centennial Park off of Montrose, you'll see where the play equipment is already being replaced, and we'll move forward. We'll have to come to the council anyways for the skate park as that moves forward. So, I thought, again, I want to thank council members that were there as well. The, you heard Donna, or Ms. Crary, talk about shoveling. Anybody that needs help, please give her a call. She'll be able to help you tomorrow. The city's budget is busted about three snows ago. We're over $100,000 or more in the hole. We're going to find some money to balance it, to reimburse the account, and make sure we stay balanced. We will make sure tomorrow, if roads get bad, our public works crews will be out there like they're always out there, doing the job. We encourage you, if you live on a snow emergency route, just in case, we don't think it's going to be that bad, the snow emergency goes into effect. If you live on a snow emergency route, you need to move your vehicle off of that road. We do not like getting in the business of towing and ticketing, but we've had to do that the last couple of times, and hopefully this will be it, and the sun will be shining this weekend. Sheriff, welcome to Laurel. We look forward to your presentation night as well. Did have the opportunity to attend during the National League of Cities down in Washington to meet with our delegation from Maryland. John Alexander, our government affairs person in Washington that we work with, set up some good meetings, and we were able to talk about our Pike Master Plan and other things that went on and things that were going on in the city and our delegation. We appreciate them making the time to meet with me. Did have also the opportunity to attend Councilwoman, Congresswoman, excuse me, Donna Edwards's Coffee and Congressations. It was held at the Senior Center on Van Dusen Road. Very good turnout and a lot of good information that she provided to members of the community. Couple of announcements. On March 28, Burlington Co. Factory will have their ribbon cutting at the Newtown Center at 9:30. You can get into that center off of Fourth Street and off of Route 1. There will be certain areas that you cannot get to if you come in off of Route 1. I would suggest Fourth Street coming in. It's a straight shot to Burlington, and you don't get in the way of the construction. They're about probably a couple of months, about a month behind, like most construction jobs, but they are continuing to move forward. A lot of progress is being made over there, and as I said, Burlington will be opening up on March 28. On April 12, the Patuxent River cleanup at Riverfront Park at the Avondale Mill site from 9 until 12. We encourage you to come and take part, and you can contact Mr. Lotzky or his office if you'd like to get involved with that or need other information. April 12 is the Park and Recreation Extravaganza event. Years ago, I could never say that, so I've been here too long, as some would say, and I've been able to say extravaganza without any problem. It's a great opportunity for kids to come out from 1 to 3 and take part for, through our Park and Recs division, and we encourage you to bring your kids out and have a good time. On April 14, will be my time with the mayor. That's from 4:30 to 6:30 at the Robert J. De Pietro Community Center. It's on a first-come, first-served basis. If you'd like to come and speak to the mayor and have concerns or things you want to be brought to my attention, please feel free to come on April 14 from 4:30 to 6:30. And then on April 23, the city staff loves this. We have city hall in the park. They always do the rain dance to make, see if it'll rain, so we cancel those. Be no rain this year. City Hall in the park at Riverfront Park at the Avondale Mill. That's from 6:30 until 8. That starts our Riverfront Park, or City Hall in the park program off for the year. Mr. President, let me also want to take this opportunity to nominate the following members for the redevelopment authority, the CRA. Mr. Jamal Lee. Mr. Lee is the founder of a very successful business known as Bresia Productions on Compton Avenue. His company is a full-service production company and very involved here in Laurel. His appointment would take the spot, your spot, as the council president of the CRA. Former Laurel City Council member, Tim Abel, and a longtime business owner here in the city of Laurel. Mr. Abel is owner of Security Vault Works, and his appointment would take that of Council Member Ricks's spot on the CRA. And then Mr. Fred Frederick, longtime business owner here in the city of Laurel. Mr. Frederick is the owner of Fred Frederick Local Car Dealership here in the city. His appointment would take that of Council Member Nicholas's spot on the CRA. So that would put three members, business members, on the CRA and leave the two council members. I'd ask for your approval.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. President, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Rowell, please call for the vote.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Thank you all very much. My next appointment tonight, I'm very pleased to announce the appointment, Ms. Audrey Barnes, to the position of Director of Department of Communications. Ms. Barnes is Emmy Award-winning journalist who grew up in Laurel. After graduating from Laurel High School, she received her undergraduate degree from the University of Maryland College Park and earned a master's degree from Northwest University. She has worked for television stations across the country, including Maryland and Washington, DC. Audrey's experience and her natural way with people will enhance the credibility that Laurel has with its residents, businesses, and people who consider Laurel their next home. I know she's excited about the job and this new position. I know she'll meet the challenges that will be put in front of her, and she will get the word of and the message of the Marion City Council out. And when I asked Audrey to come aboard, I was very happy that she agreed to do that. And, Mr. President, I would ask that you all approve the appointment of Ms. Audrey Barnes for the City Law Department of Director of Communications.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Crary?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Rowell, call the roll, please.
She is here.
Ms. Crary?
Move to approve.
Ms. Nicholas?
Approve.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
President Smalls?
Yes. Ms. Barnes, the mic is yours, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to, first of all, thank Mayor Craig Moe for giving me this wonderful opportunity. I grew up in Laurel, went to Montpelier Elementary School, Eisenhower Junior High, and graduated from Laurel Senior High School. My father is a retired Army Colonel, and we chose Laurel, he chose Laurel, because of its proximity to Washington, DC. And at one point, he was stationed at Walter Reed. So, it was just a great community to grow up in, and I'm so glad to be able to come back and spread the word, be a part of Mayor Craig Moe's vision for Laurel. It's just fantastic. Nothing like my days cruising the Laurel Shopping Center after high school football games. It's just calm leaps and bounds, and it's so exciting to be here. So, I want to, Mayor, I want to thank you for this wonderful opportunity. I'm really looking forward to getting the word out about all that Laurel has to offer. Okay. I want to also recognize my husband, Ken Brown. He's supported me for the last, you know, 25 years as I've moved him across the country from TV station to TV station. I told him, "We're back in Laurel, and we're here to stay." So, thank you for coming out. Appreciate it.
All right. Audrey, I hope he's used to the telephone ringing in the middle of the night, so.
I warned him.
Okay. Very good. Good. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate that. Thank you. We will now move to agenda item nine, a general public hearing. Please note, if you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign a speaker list that is now here in front of me. The president has the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for each agenda item. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak for each agenda item. I will open the general public hearing at 7:20. I have Mr. John Lofton signed up to speak.
Good evening. My name is John Lofton. I live on Gerald Road in Laurel, Maryland. I am director of the God and Government Project, the purpose of which is to remind you and all elected officials that government is ordained by God. So, the first duty of all civil government officials is to obey God. A little over 30 years ago in London, in a speech titled "Men Have Forgotten God," the great Russian writer and patriot Alexander Solzhenitsyn recalled how 50 years earlier, when he was a child, he remembered hearing older people say that all the disasters that had befallen Russia were caused by the fact that men had forgotten God. Solzhenitsyn went on to say that in the half-century since he heard this as a child, he had read hundreds of books, he had collected hundreds of personal testimonies, and if he was today, that's 1983, if he was asked to formulate as concisely as possible the main cause of the ruinous communist revolution in his country that swallowed up, that killed, that murdered 60 million people, he could not more accurately explain why this had happened than to say that all of this happened because men had forgotten God. That, he said, is why it happened. So, I'm here tonight to ask you respectfully, please, do not forget God, the God of the Bible, the only true God there is. Do not forget that God has ordained civil government, and that God sets the limits of government, and that obedience to God brings a blessing. As God tells us in Psalm 33, verse 12, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lofton. I have no one else signed up to speak during the general public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the general public hearing at 7:23. Agenda item 10 is a briefing from the Prince George's County Sheriff, Melvin Hyde. Good evening, Sheriff.
Good evening, Mr. President. Mayor Moe and President Smalls, all of the council members, ladies and gentlemen, certainly my honor and pleasure to come and share with you a little bit about your sheriff's office this evening. I'm certainly delighted for the opportunity to appear before you. Like you, I'm an elected official, and so I appreciate the importance of being informative, transparent, and accountable to citizens as we undertake the work they've entrusted us to do. As an agency serving every jurisdiction in the county, I thought it was important to provide you an overview and update about the work we do in every one of our communities every day. Certainly been my privilege to know you, Mayor, and President Smalls, over the years, and appreciate the relationship we've been able to build. Certainly have had an opportunity from my time as the chief of police here in Prince George's County to work with your police department, and I consider it one of America's best. So, certainly my privilege to know all of you. I know Colonel Palmer has provided you with some of the copies of our most recent annual report, which really lays out what our vision, strategy, and execution has been over the last three years in each of our bureaus. And our bureaus is the organizational structure by which we get our work done. I want to walk you briefly through some of the key issues facing our agency and areas specifically that are relevant to public safety, and so certainly to all of you and to the citizens of the city of Laurel. But before I do that, I wanted to introduce some of the staff members who are with me this evening. I have to my far right Colonel Darren Palmer, who serves as our chief assistant sheriff. Sitting next to him is Lieutenant Colonel Regina Taylor. And next to her is Ms. Sharon Taylor. She heads our communications and legislative affairs unit. And next to her is Mr. Mark Spencer, who is our inspector general. Mayor, President, we've all faced resource issues due to a very tough economy, but it's important to know what resources are available to you in order to prioritize the work that must be done. And I would just say, as the slide here talks a little bit, speaks to our budget. It says that our budget over the last several years has been relatively flat, and of course, in this economy, I guess that's what we have come to expect. But I've had a good relationship with the county executive and the county council, and so they have been supportive, though our budget is still a challenge. And under that budget, staffing has suffered during this challenging economy. As you can see from our staffing resources, our sworn staff has remained relatively flat throughout the last several years. Our civilian staff has remained relatively flat throughout the last few years. And I would say that while our sworn staff is critically important to getting our work done every day, so is our civilian staff. Their importance is that all of the various important documents that come into the sheriff's office, from warrants to writs of various kind that address legal issues, address safety in our community, our civilian staff is responsible for inputting all of the data from those documents and getting it into the various databases and systems so that our deputies, when they actually go out to serve these orders, serve these warrants, know who they're looking for, so they're looking for the right person, they're looking at the right locations, and they have as much information as any of the various databases can have for them so that they are safe when they go out and conduct these various activities. What I would just say to you, as you look at these charts, and particularly as you talk, we talk about our budgets and our resources, we have a heavy workload in the sheriff's office. And so I tip my hat to the men and women of our agency. They've had to work at near to full capacity to get the work done, and so they've done an outstanding job. And so, we have made progress in spite of our resources. One of our critical responsibilities, as you may know, is that we serve as the law enforcement arm of our courts, responsible for courthouse safety, courtroom security, but we're also responsible for the service of all of the orders and writs and warrants that our various judges and court people issue. The Upper Marlboro Courthouse is the business in the state where last year, 1.3 million visitors, that's citizens, employees, and others who entered and exited safely, they had to conduct various legal business. That is enormously important to the public, their safety during the post-9/11 time. And so, we were able to have that 1.3 million people come through our doors and our various court complexes without a single incident of violence or disorder. And so I think that's remarkable in terms of the work that our people do to keep that institution safe. A security concern not often considered as safety in the, is the safety in the actual courtroom and where the court's trials and activities actually take place. And so that's equally as important as the facility itself. And from time to time, we get challenges for our judges, even threats to themselves and their families, and so fortunately, we've been able to manage all of those events and keep our courts, courtrooms, and judges safely, and all of the employees who work there. Over the course of a year, if we aggregate all of the various trials and activities in each of the courtrooms, we manage about 9,000 courtrooms if you aggregate those numbers. And so that's a pretty sizable process that we have there. We have a number of high-risk trials that go on, trials for multiple murders, drugs, gang trials, all of that in our courts. As I said earlier, our courts are the busiest in the state over the last several years. Another critically important piece to the courts is the transport and safety of our prisoners. We transport to our courts about 40 to 50 prisoners every day. That number grows to about 100 prisoners on Fridays because of various motions and other activities that occur in our courthouse. We were able to do that with that flow of prisoners with, again, their safety in mind, the safety of all of the people who are in our courthouse, and certainly to prevent any escapes. When I came into office in 2010, we had a significant warrant backlog. And my goal was, as I promised to the citizens when I ran for office, was to begin to reduce that backlog and develop a strategy that would help us do that and address this issue to make sure that that was a complement to the safety efforts that all of the other public safety agencies were doing. And so, we came up with what I consider a comprehensive warrant strategy. The first piece of that was to analyze all of the warrants that we had in existence and kind of see what they were and kind of where they fit. And I came into office, and there were about 54,000 outstanding warrants to be served at that time. But we did an analysis, and based on that analysis, that number of 54,000 was going to grow to 60,000. to grow to 63,000 by 2011. I got elected and was actually into office in December of 2010. And so in that next year, that number is going to grow to about 63,000 warrants. But our analysis also showed that most of those warrants were for, really, not significant matters. They were, I don't want to say insignificant, but not significant matters. Many of the warrants went back 35 or 40 years. They were for things like urinating in public, drinking in public, those kind of things that had occurred years ago. And some of the people who would have been defendants in those cases were in their 70s, 80s, and 90s. And so as we looked at, because we can't do everything at once, prioritizing how would we go about addressing the warrants, the backlog and the number of warrants we get in every day. And so our focus was on violent crime warrants. We thought those represented the most immediate danger to our community, so we wanted to focus on the violent crime warrants. So we pulled those out and worked to address first as a priority, the violent crime warrants. And then we thought the next most immediate thing as it relates to warrants were the new warrants that were issued every day. We get about 2,200 to, oh, about 2,500, 2,600 new warrants every month. And so based on the strategy that we were able to come up with, where we focused on the violent crimes and had our deputies and our allies, people like your police officers here in the Laurel City Police, police in all of our municipalities, the county police, the state police, and our federal partners, particularly the Marshal Service, to work with us to focus on violent crimes. And then we developed a relationship with the Motor Vehicle Administration so that many people who, particularly for the traffic warrants and a sizable number of the warrants, were for traffic offenses so that before someone could renew their license or their tags, they would get flagged by the Motor Vehicle Administration and they would have to address that issue before they could renew. And so that, we found that to be helpful. And then we went to our General Assembly and said we needed a little bit of reform amendment to the current law. The current law allowed for the recall of certain warrants, but it did not include the state's attorney in that process. And so we asked the General Assembly to include the state's attorney in that process so that the warrants could be reviewed to determine if they had prosecuted merit. And so the General Assembly amended the law to permit that to happen. We've had a good working relationship with the state's attorney, Attorney Alsebrook, and her staff. They review a number of these cases, particularly the very aged cases, so I'm going back 35 or 40 years, for very minor offenses. In many of these cases where the police officer is no longer available, or the victim, the witnesses are no longer available, in some cases, the defendant is no longer available. And so they view it and look at it to see if there's prosecution merit in it. If there's not, then the state's attorney presents that case to a judge to ask to have that case recalled. And so that's been somewhat helpful to us as well. And so serving warrants is a big part of our responsibility. And over the course of these three years, we've been able to stop that trend upward, start the trend downward. And so we were, today, we're at about 42,000, less than 42,000 of those 54,000 warrants that we first encountered, and that's down about 20%. We're reducing at a rate of about 4,000 per year of that backlog and at the same time staying current on the 2,200 to 2,500 new warrants that are issued. That's a hard workload because most of the people who are wanted for some kind of offense don't want to be found, so it's a real challenging, hard piece of work to go out and find people and then to bring them in for justice. Every day, I have people involved with expeditions that are going around the region, around the country, looking for people who are wanted. We have a good investigative section that investigates to find where people are and then so that we can contact that police agency in that jurisdiction to put a hole on that person until we can come and get them and bring them back for trial. Another one of the issues that we deal with, another one of our responsibilities is child support enforcement. We work hand in hand with the state agency on child support to make sure that our children are cared for and their welfare is a priority for all of us. And so working in conjunction with the Child Support Agency, we collect about 100, over $100 million every year in child support payments that have not been made. Last year, we collected about $117 million in unpaid child support to make sure that the custodial parent was getting the resources they needed to care appropriately for their children. The importance to our community is that if that, we aren't going to let our children starve or go homeless, et cetera. So if those monies aren't collected, then we, the taxpayers, are going to have to pick that up. We also aid the court in helping to establish paternity in cases where that needs to be done as well. Another area of responsibility, an area where I have passion for, is domestic violence intervention. We serve in the fight against this terrible societal concern in three ways. My deputies serve all peace and protective orders, and in the case of protective orders, this may very well be the first step that an abused person, most often a woman, takes in terms of legal remedies. We are also the first responders for domestic violence and to 911 emergency calls for service in Police District 3. That came out of a pilot project that pilot is still going on. We've, as a result of that pilot, we've developed some best practices in dealing with domestic violence. A critical piece is we do something called a lethality assessment. And every police agent in the state has to do that lethality assessment now, but in the sheriff's office, that lethality assessment is about a seven-page form where there are specific questions that our deputies are required to ask of victims so that we get the right information and input about that situation and circumstance so that other specialists that we have within our agency can make the proper assessments to determine what the lethality risk is in those cases. And our approach to doing that has been considered a best practice. We've had an independent university look at what we do, and they've said so. In this District 3, which consists of Sootland, Forestville, Capitol Heights, District Heights, Palmer Park, et cetera, the sheriff's office responds to about 85 to 90%, 95% of the domestic violence calls. We make arrests probably in about 10% of those cases where the circumstances require that. But in every one of those cases, and in cases where it comes to our attention through the service of protective orders or peace orders, we have a staff of civilian experts in our agency called Special Victims Assistance, and those Special Victims Assistants reach out to the abused person as well as abusers. They look at that lethality assessment that's been made to determine what are the next steps that we need to do, that we need to help the victim do to go from victim to survivor. And so our goal, the county's goal, working in conjunction with the county police and all of the various county agencies that are involved in domestic violence, our goal is to improve the visibility of this issue, to move it from an embarrassing situation so that ultimately we can get to our goal, which is zero. And so we have a ways to go, but we're working on that. One of the concepts that we're looking at right now is called a family justice center, where we will house all of the various agencies that have some interest in domestic violence under one roof so that there are people who, in that family justice center, become advocates for the victims. We'll look at it from a holistic standpoint to make sure that all of the agencies are bringing the best and most appropriate action to bear on each of these victims and their circumstances so that we can help that victim to move forward. And so that's a critical thing. We provide, I guess you would say, three-phase process to provide, we provide in dealing with this issue. As I said, the 911 response, the victims assistance follow-up, and then working with our other partners. Let me also say, the last issue that I will present to you and be respectful of your time, and I do appreciate your time, we deal with landlord and tenant issues. Our community, like most of America, most of the world, has been hit hard by the recession and the tough economic times, and so we've seen this issue of people's inability to pay their rent, to pay their mortgages grow. And we deal with this in three phases. One is, while we're not involved with the legal issue, that's strictly between the parties that are involved to address it from a legal standpoint. But once the legal issues have been put forward and addressed and the courts have made some determination in it, we do basically three things. We provide certainty and efficient notification to all parties of when the hearing is going to be held regarding foreclosures. The next we do is we schedule the date of evictions. When the courts have had their hearing and they determine that the property owner has a right to regain possession of their property, then we schedule the evictions. We send notices, we make sure there's contact with the person who's in the problem of not being able to pay that mortgage, to give them as much time as possible to find new accommodations, et cetera, and to move their things before we actually go forward with an eviction. And then when we actually do have an eviction, we provide supervision of that eviction to make sure that peace and order is maintained during the course of those things. We think we bring compassion to it and work with all parties to make sure that it is done as compassionately as possible. Now, we get a lot of initial notices from the court about foreclosures and about failure to pay rent. And out of those numbers, probably about 5% to 10% actually result in evictions because once people get the notice that the matter's going to be heard in court, they find a solution. They work out a solution between themselves and their mortgage holder or their property manager or what have you to find a solution to that. And if they can't find a solution, many people move on their own since they have some space of time to do that in an orderly manner. So that it ends up with us having to actually go and undertake service in only about 5% or so of these cases. But that's a very critical function, and we see a real challenge to our community, and that challenge continues even today. That's essentially the functions that we do in the sheriff's office, and I hope it has been informative to you as well as to your citizen. It continues to be my great pleasure to serve the people of Prince George's County. And I also want to thank Ms. Raoul, is that how you pronounce it, for her assistance in getting me here today and helping me to get all set up for my visit. And with that, thank you for your attention, and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Sheriff. I think many of us have very little understanding of the varied duties and responsibilities that your office has. And I'll just, for me personally, just say how much of a pleasure it is to have you here and to talk to us about what your office does. We have the opportunity, you're no stranger to Laurel, you're here on a number of occasions, but to actually come before us in a public meeting and speak to us about what your office does has been very informative. Mayor, any comments?
Sheriff, thank you very much. I think the President said it all. You're here quite a bit in Laurel. We appreciate when you're, when you show up or members of your staff that are here. We greatly appreciate that. You've been a friend of the city for a long time, and we look forward to continuing working with you. And I know our chief works with your staff as well very well. So thank you very much for coming. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. And just as I exit, I was here on Saturday, I had an opportunity to go over to the Laurel Boys and Girls Club and watch some of our very young athletes play a little basketball. So it was certainly my privilege to be there. All right, thank you.
Sheriff, I'll use a line that the mayor often uses when we have visitors to our city. Did you have lunch here? Did you buy anything here? Did you spend any money?
We're looking for $100,000 if he's got it.
In fact, I did. I helped the coffers out. I assume you get taxed from the various eateries and things like that. I dropped $60 on Saturday.
Thank you.
You need 99 points.
Thank you. We'll now move to Agenda Item 11, Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1796, an ordinance to amend the operating budget of the Maryland City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Ms. Saylor, are you? Nope. Okay, I've read the title onto the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:49. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:49. What's a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. President, I move for the approval of Ordinance Number 1796.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Raoul, please call a roll.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
Ms. Querry?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mel?
I concur.
Agenda Item 12 is a Second Public Hearing with Possible Action on Ordinance Number 1797, an ordinance to amend certain project budgets in the FY 2014 through FY 2019 Capital Improvement Program. Mr. McCullough, any additions? Ms. Saylor? Thank you. I will open the public hearing at 7:50 on this agenda item. I have no one signed up to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:50. What's a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none.
I just do want to point out, this is, this money is to make some changes in the council chambers and the lobby area as well. So once we get that, we'll be finalizing some changes and then come back to counsel and also help bring some technology in here as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Raoul?
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Querry?
Yes.
Mr. Laz?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Mel?
I concur.
Agenda Item 13 is Introduction to First Public Hearing on Resolution Number 2-14, a resolution authorizing the participation of the city of Laurel with Howard County, Maryland to establish a regional transportation agency in the central Maryland, in central Maryland, rather, to provide fixed route and pareroute or para-transit services in the greater Laurel, Howard County, Anarundel County, Prince George's County, and the city of Annapolis areas. I've read the title onto the record for the first reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:52. I have two people signed up to speak. First person is Beverly Walinga, Walinga, yeah. Would you please, and sorry for butchering your name, but if you'll please come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Beverly Walinga. I'm the Director of Finance and Administration for the Central Maryland Regional Transit, and we run the public bus service in the city of Laurel, in Anarundel County, Howard County, and Prince George's County, which is the city is in. We wanted to address this resolution. We've been in business and running this public bus system for 25 years, and I think our actions- our actions speak louder than words, that we've been running it successfully. We're, with this resolution, it's reinventing the wheel. It's reinventing something that's already happening. We are a nonprofit. We started in 1987, and we've grown from, I think, four buses and five routes to, right now, about seventy buses and fifteen routes. We recently had a route change. We've made improvements to your system here in Laurel. We have new signs, new faces on the buses with new designs. We've made a lot of improvements in the last year and a half. We started out back in 1989, running about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand people, and we're up to 1.6 million, and that's our history. We are a nonprofit, so we are not profit-driven. We have a board of directors, and we spend, of every dollar we spend, ninety-three cents goes to program. Seven cents goes to administration. With the suggested regional system that you are proposing to sign the resolution for, they're dealing with a vendor who is a for-profit company, and for-profit companies are answers to their shareholders. They're profit-driven. They, they, their goal isn't necessarily serving the community, it's making a profit. And although vendors throughout our businesses, we need vendors, we need some for-profit companies, but to have an entire company running the bus service is not serving your community as well. And our goal is to get your citizens where they need and want to go. Over fifty percent of them go to work and use your bus system, I mean, they work, but they're using the bus system to get to work. We've distributed our FY 13 annual report, and you can see much of the data in there. We hate to see the good service that we've brought cutting corners, a new vendor coming in with the goal of making a profit and cutting corners to do so. So our desire is for the City of Laurel, or recommendations for the City of Laurel, to not sign the resolution. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I also have signed up to speak, Mr. Mark Bullock. Mr. Bullock, if you'll come forward and also give your name and address for the record, sir?
Hi, Mark Bullock, and I'm a resident city of Laurel, 7800 Conti Road in Laurel. And I'm also the Director of Operations for Central Maryland Regional Transit. And I just want to bring back up a little bit and piggyback on what Beverly had mentioned about being a nonprofit where ninety-three cents of every dollar is going to service versus a for-profit entity managing the systems. And with that, CMRT has returned to their stakeholders $4.3 million over the last nine years. And that's the budget actual, I mean, the projected budget versus the actual net budget at the end of the year. And so that's, you know, over $400,000 a year going back to the stakeholders coming in under budget, and that's because, as a nonprofit, we are operating lean, which is different than a for-profit would do. And I also want to point out that the City of Laurel becoming part of the RTA would cost jobs in the City of Laurel, seeing how Central Maryland Regional Transit is headquartered in the City of Laurel, in the Laurel College Building on Marshall Avenue. And so it would have a direct impact in jobs as well as, you know, just picture, do you see a for-profit agency returning $4.3 million? So that's something for you to think about. So please just look over everything there is regarding the RFP and the resolution, and then do what your heart tells you to do is right for the City of Laurel going forward in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Mayor Moe?
Mark, could you talk a little bit about paratransit? Does that ninety-three cents still take care of the paratransit as well?
Yes, that's what we, that's what we're spending. Ninety-three cents of every dollar is going directly back into...
That's paratransit as well?
Yes, because we do provide paratransit in the area.
And that whole ninety-three cents and then the seven cents to the administration?
Correct.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no one else signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If you come to the podium, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is John Powell. I'm the Administrator for the Office of Transportation, Howard County. I'd just like to respond to this profit, nonprofit thing. Currently, we're going to pay about $550,000 to the contractor. Right now, CMRT is paying in profit about $610,000, the contractor. So the idea that all of a sudden you're going to turn around and be paying a profit where you haven't paid one before is not correct. The other thing, just to be aware of, is Anarundel County is about ready to sign the MOU. When that occurs, the services that, right now, you're paying about seventeen percent of, you would be paying a hundred percent of. That's the cost of not being in the RTA. There are a lot of benefits to it. One of the big benefits is that you have people on the board who are going to represent this jurisdiction. And these are big changes. So I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at eight o'clock. Counsel, for your consideration, we can either suspend the rules and vote on this. Do we? We're all right?
I'd like to sit on.
Okay, all right. With that said, then we'll hold a second public hearing, and I'll include it on the agenda for our work session in April. We're in agreement? Okay, all right, thank you. What's that date, Ms. Raoul, for our work session?
The work session is going to be April the 2nd.
April 2nd, and the next...
The public hearing will be on the 14th of April.
Very good, thank you. Okay, that concludes our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the Marion City Council? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1776.32]